Rise and flip the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Barr, are you doing roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Sermonero, Mrs. Hamel, here, Mr. Kurtz, here, Mr. McCullough, Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Basil.
Here. And our announcements, this meeting is being recorded. Also, we had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel, and we'll be having an executive session after this meeting to discuss litigation. Also on the agenda, what is this, item number C1E, we'll be bringing forward, we're gonna have Jeff Haas, Director of Educational Technology, annual salary of $85,000 effective January 12th, 2012, replaces M. Jacobs, will be item C1E.
Actually, that would be placing Brian Camp.
Or Brian Camp.
Brian Paul.
Okay, having said that, instructions for public participation are in the inside blue jacket of the agenda, and having said that, are there any presentations by the public on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to recognition for December. Dr. Otto?
Well, first of all, for everyone here from the community tonight, happy holidays. Nice to see all of you. We're all anticipating, looking and looking forward to a couple of days off in the coming weeks. But before we get to our formal agenda this evening, we have a number of recognitions, as is usually our case here at our December meeting, in items 7A through F, we're going to recognize a number of different things going on in the district, and then item 7G, we're going to be recognizing one of our former board members who's here in attendance tonight as well. I'm gonna turn over the 7A through F to Mrs. Trainer, so bear with us for each of these individual recognitions, and then we'll close out by recognizing Mrs. Twardowski. So, Anne Marie, do you wanna take the floor?
My first recipient, I'd like to ask Elizabeth, if you could join me up here at the front. Elizabeth is both the artist and the designer of the gift, uh, the gift, excuse me.
Come on over here where we can see you.
That was included in our 2011 Christmas card, which went out to over 600 employees, friends of the district, and so on, and so Elizabeth did get a sneak preview of her card because we didn't want some faculty member to tell her how great it was and she didn't even know she won. But we now have a private stock for her, so these are for you, and also for you, as a small token of appreciation, we have a Barnes &amp; Noble gift card for you, so that you can find a favorite book or something that you can read as a gift from the district. All right? And typically, we will select two drawings from high school students that are submitted to be considered for the card, but when we saw Elizabeth, we thought by far this was outstanding, we wanted to make sure that we use that as our outstanding card for the year. So, thank you for your design, and they have a recognition certificate for you there.
Here, Elizabeth. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your work. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, second, um, Mrs. Romaine and I are sort of, if you were here last meeting, Mrs. Romaine was excited to share with the board that students that she had recently taken to a Berks County math competition, she received notice, I think that day, that Daniel Boone placed second in the competition, and that one of the individuals actually placed second out of the 51 individual competitors. So, tonight, we invited the three students from Daniel Boone that were representative. That was Jacob Reck, Ashley Kutz, and Hunter Foster. We don't know what happened to Ashley and Hunter. Jacob is here.
Ashley had volleyball. No, Ashley had volleyball.
And Mrs. Romaine received confirmation that one of the individuals representing the competition was actually bringing awards tonight, none of which showed, but we'll get through this. Jacob is here to stand in for the entire group and certainly to take kudos for his success, and he is by far no new face to the math department's success record. So, Jacob, welcome, and we have a certificate for you.
Thank you.
For representing us, you did a great job.
Congratulations, well done. Thank you.
And he has the T-shirt on, too.
And so, one of those icons in the Daniel Boone School District, and he's thinking back there, what is she gonna say, is being recognized this month in a newspaper called About Families, so if you got your personal edition, I'm not sure, oh, I think we're just a little bit late, so I'll wrap up.
Yes.
And Dr. McGovern from Redding.
I apologize, I've never been here before. I have to say, things look different in my.
Not a problem, we were just wrapping up. Jacob is here, so if you would like to come over to the podium, you're more than welcome to do your presentation, and we'll make sure the other students get the awards also.
So, this is a continuation of the first one?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies.
No, no problem.
Well, on behalf of the Berks County Interscholastic Mathematics Championship Consortium, which has as members all of the colleges in the Berks County, Reading area, it makes me very pleased and proud to present the second place overall individual prize to Jacob Reck. Congratulations. And on the behalf of Mrs. Romaine, I would like to present the second place plaque to the school.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to our third recognition. Back here in the red shirt, for those of you who may not know Mr. Smith, come up here and see Mr. Smith.
Oh gee, thanks.
Humble Mr. Smith, who's been teaching over in the Amity side of town for many years, received a special recognition this year in the About Families newspaper, where one of his students nominated him to be Teacher of the Month, and so, I don't know if it's in the centerfold or not, but there's a picture of Lenny and Elizabeth Everett, who's the student who recognized him, and Elizabeth wrote, "I think my teacher is special because he is funny, awesome, and cool. He is a funny guy because he makes cool jokes. He can be nice."
At times.
And a special teacher, and should be Teacher of the Month. I hope he really is picked for this month's teacher, and he was, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, we appreciate you being smart and cool.
Thank you very much. I do teach.
Not that I'm gonna get away, I just learned for the first time today on my tour with Connor, he's a former school board member as well. All right. Congratulations, Lenny.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In Twin Valley.
Our next award, neither the recipient nor the presenter was able to attend. Each year, I speak to you about successful teachers in the Daniel Boone School District receiving First Energy Math and Science Grants, and this year, Stacy Holman at the middle school wrote a grant to integrate math, science, and technology education together, and was recognized as one of the 20 Pennsylvania teachers receiving the grant. So, Mr. Gilman will make sure I get the check as soon as the Christmas holidays are over and we'll get Stacy up and running, so she will be using that with her sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students over at the middle school, so we were really happy to continue our successes. Daniel Boone is the only school in Pennsylvania, or the only district, rather, who has had at least one teacher recipient annually for the grant, so.
Wow, that's great.
It's a credit certainly to our staff. The next recognition is actually also somewhat informational. I'm not sure if the board is actually aware of a program that Mr. Porella and I started a year ago, and John, if you wanna come on up. John Porella is Director of Food Service at the Daniel Boone School District, and last year, he became aware of a program through previous experiences, I believe, but that it was available to Daniel Boone School District, and the short of a longer story is, it's a backpack program where food is provided to students who meet certain criteria on the weekends, in order to make sure that they have food for the weekends. It is at no cost to the district, it is supported by the Greater Berks Food Bank, it is available to schools that are at least a 30% free and reduced lunch and breakfast population, of which we have one here in the district, that would be Birdsboro, and so, we've tried different ways to pack the backpacks, get them out to the students, get them back, and this year, we have local churches volunteering senior citizens who come in during the day on a Thursday. Mrs. Aries, who's actually here also, she's really sort of the coordinator within Birdsboro for us. Janice is certainly the lifeline that helped us get this all together, and high school students have helped us in last year, but we put out somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 backpacks on a Friday afternoon, they're back on a Monday, and the cycle continues week after week. John, through Sedexo, was made aware of a possibility of writing a grant where we could get some money to return to the food bank for the donations of all the food, and so, he was successful in getting a $4,500 grant spread out over three years, and so, Mrs. Mess from the Greater Food Bank is actually here tonight, so that John can give her the check, and I will turn the program over to John to say any additional comments, and also to introduce Deborah West.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I would like to say that I played a bigger part in this than I did, but actually, when we started the program, I made one phone call to Mrs. Mess and said, you know, would it be possible for us to start this at Daniel Boone? She said, absolutely. It came out, and that was pretty much it, and as far as the operation and organization part of it, Mrs. Aries over here is, well, she should be the Backpack Person of the Month. But, no, she handles, all I do at the beginning of the year is make the little name tags, and she does the rest, so. She organized, receives the food when it comes in, makes sure that the bags get packed with the volunteers, and get to the appropriate rooms, I mean, they take them to the classrooms. All the bags have, are only identified by the teacher's name and a number, so that there's no, it's as confidential as we can go, so. Deborah, if you'd like to come up? I think maybe if you could say a couple words to kind of explain how the backpack program works, 'cause I know you do it at, is it 29?
We have, we actually have a total of 12.
12, okay.
12 schools that we do this in, both Berks and Scruggles Counties. The program is ever-expanding, and we would love to offer it to every school district, however, it is a non-funded program, so we rely completely on donations, grants, so it does get a little difficult, we have to kind of watch our budget to be able to say, okay, we're gonna go to this school, that school. We are now serving between 1,300 and 1,400 children every weekend throughout the program, and I want to say a special thank you to you, because you did contact me, and I will not forget our conversation, you told me a story about some children, and it just went right here, and I went right to my boss and said, we need to put this in that school district, and what you guys have done, I mean, we couldn't do this program without the volunteers and the schools and that type of thing, so we're very appreciative of this, and, you know, we'll be able to go out, we'll be able to purchase other foods and bring them to your school.
Well, I just want to say, you know, on behalf of the school board and the school district, thank you. It takes, you guys are doing something really amazing, and it takes special people to step up and do something like this, and I think you're all very special people for doing it, and so, thank you, and obviously, on behalf of the 1,300 families that you're taking care of, it's just an amazing thing, so, thank you very, very much for making us all aware of it and having the school district participate to the level it has.
Okay, so, on behalf of the Sedexo Foundation, I have this check. I made it. It's, as Anne Marie said, it's $4,500 in total, it's spread over three years, so, the paycheck that you just received is for $2,000, it'll be 1,500 in the second year, and $1,000 in the third year, so.
Well, thank you very much, we really do appreciate this, and it'll help us sustain the program for many, many years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last of my recognition is really just sort of along the same lines, just giving recognition back to our local community for additional activities that have been going on, as well as folks within our own district. I spoke to the Birdsboro Ministerium in September and put out an idea on the table that I suggested that they adopt a school, so that each neighborhood church represented around the table would adopt someone close to their particular parish, and in that way, the parishioners could identify with the school, and instead of one parish, which seemed to be the hub of a lot of things in past years, especially St. Paul's Lutheran, that everyone would take an active role in helping for food baskets for Thanksgiving and Christmas and so on, and so, they were all extremely appreciative of the invitation, and so, St. Paul's Lutheran in Douglasville adopted Amity Primary, St. Paul's UCC in Amityville took Amity Intermediate, St. Paul's and Alice Folk in Birdsboro took Birdsboro Elementary, Hope Church took Monocacy Elementary, St. Gabriel's Episcopal took Middle School, and Immaculate Conception took the High School. And so, their first job was twofold, one was to help us find volunteers for Janice's backpack, and we, I think, are close to being able to actually divide them into crews, because they keep coming out of the woodwork, as one goes back after doing the backpacks, it seems like I get a call from somebody else, which is exciting that we're able to outreach to more folks. So, that was part one, and part two was getting Thanksgiving baskets for needy families in the Daniel Boone School District. So, between all of those churches, they delivered 44 huge food baskets to our schools for Thanksgiving, and then moved on to look at Christmas, and so, either by the end of today or early tomorrow, that same group of churches, minus the Immaculate Conception, which has an internal activity going on for Christmas, will be delivering 37 food baskets to the nurses in the buildings, and then they will also be delivering those out for Christmas food, for people who have no food. In addition to that, between grandparents knitting hats and gloves, the Eastern Berks Business Alliance that recently gave me a very generous donation of $500, local vendors, staff members who chose not to buy gifts for each other but to donate money, National Honor Society that put together for food baskets for staff members whose family is in hardship right now, over the last month, faculty members have been identifying students within our district who do not have, for one reason or another, coats, sneakers, sweatpants due to economic hardship conditions, and unfortunately, that number rises each year, it is just a sign of our economy. And so, as of Friday afternoon, Mr. Smith's elves delivered for me 76 coats to buildings that will be given to students this week, we had about 10 pairs of sneakers, and we had a number of pair of sweatpants, all from donation money, nothing at the cost of the district, or donated, it was all new apparel from either local vendors or purchased through money that was given to us. In addition, we had a number of folks who adopted families, and so, we also hooked one child up with, shop with a cop, if you saw the program written up recently in the Reading Eagle, we had a young man whose father died last summer, and so, he was selected to shop with the cop, and that was to be able to buy something for his mother for Christmas, because they have no money right now, and so, the stories go on and on and on, but I think, again, it just speaks to the outreach and the warmth within our own Daniel Boone School District, and our concern to take care of those around us that are needy at this time of the year, so, just wanted to make sure I've recognized everybody for doing that.
Absolutely.
I would like to just take a moment, usually when you see this kind of stuff, you look around, you wonder how it's happening, I would like to give all the credit to Mrs. Trainer, she, not all of it, but she reaches out and works with all these groups in the community, and sometimes it goes very unnoticed, she's been very hard to get a hold of lately, but it's been for a very, very good cause, all the things that she just told you about, so, Mrs. Trainer, on behalf of all of us.
Thank you.
I also wanted to mention that today at the Amity Intermediate Center, there was a ceremony for, if you remember, last summer, unfortunately, we lost one of our law enforcement officers in the community, Kyle Pagerly, and the Amity Intermediate Center actually gave some gifts to the widow of Kyle at the school today, the students had befriended the dog, he worked with the dogs and drug awareness, and if you didn't follow that story, go back and check the Reading Eagle last summer, but we unfortunately lost somebody in the line of duty. Our students reached out, and Mrs. Pagerly is currently eight months pregnant and ready to, you know, give birth, and the students at the school all banded together and bought some gifts, and we had a nice, there was a nice ceremony today over at the Amity Intermediate Center. If you get a chance to view it, Channel 69 News was there, I'm sure, when they repeat their Berks edition tonight, I don't know if anyone had a chance to see it or not, if you saw the story, very, very touching, the mother was extremely moved by the generosity of the school and the students, I know Mr. Smith happened to be there today, he's in that school, so, it was, I'm sure, very, very difficult, but at this time of the year, as we're recognizing all these people, it's just something else I wanted to, again, mention to show, you know, what we've been doing in Daniel Boone, to try to help those that are in need. So, on that note, I mean, there was nothing on the agenda about that, but I think it just kind of fit into the moment here. Finally, on item 7G, we're here to recognize the service of Tamara Twardowski, for her tenure on the Daniel Boone School Board, just a little history, she was appointed in 2009 to finish out the term of Mr. Mike Shearer, who had to relocate due to employment. Mrs. Twardowski served as a representative to the Berks Career and Technology Center, served as a faithful member on our Revenue Enhancement Committee, served in our Economic Advisory Committee, which obviously still has some work to do, as all our committees do, and also served very well on our Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
And, and Finance?
You also did some time on Finance, so you can see in her two years, she really did yeoman's work, and we appreciate your service, we're sorry to see you have gone so soon, so, we, on behalf of the district, we have a token of appreciation, if you would not mind coming forward to receive that, and you can officially have your nights back now. Thank you very much for your service to the district, Tamara.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tamara. As we normally do, any board members who have served with Tamara, now's the time, if you want to chime into the minutes, anything you'd like to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, your municipal experience, your level-headed, frank approach to addressing some very, very difficult issues in a very, very difficult time was most welcome, and I appreciated working with you, and I'm sorry to see you go, but I'm sure it's a mixed blessing in the sense that you're getting your life back on Monday nights as well as other nights, and we wish you well and hope to see you around and hopefully stay involved in some of the things that we do, so, but thank you.
Thanks, I'd just like to say quick, I'd just like to thank all of you and the residents that I was able to serve too, you were a great group to work with, I learned a lot, and I think it's a great experience for anybody to sit on a board, it's really easy to sit out here and say, do this, do that, you can't do this, you can't do that, but sitting up there when you're responsible for educating students and trying to keep the taxpayers in mind, it's a phenomenal experience, and I enjoyed it, but it's, it can be difficult, and for anybody that has the opportunity, go for it, so, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay? Yeah, well, actually, yes, we can do that. So, at this time, we're gonna take a quick, two-minute recess, so if anybody wants to get up and go home now, please feel free to do so, if you want to stay for the balance of the meeting.
More than welcome.
You're more than welcome, it's a party. Miss Twardowski will tell you.
Was there something else you wanted to add?
No, 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 I'm gonna bring the gentleman up right now, so if he wants to leave after that, he, it looks like he's getting ready to leave now. Where is he?
I'm coming.
In the sweater?
Yes.
Yeah, no, we're gonna bring you up next.
Okay, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. I know what's life, being a school board member.
Yeah, no, no, so we understand, we know what you're sitting there through the whole meeting, yeah, so I'm gonna bring you up as soon as everyone sort of exits.
What do you want me standing?
You can just come up to the podium then, and then just sort of tell us.
That's too far.
Pull a chair up if you want, get real cozy. Okay, it looks like we've got everybody else here for the duration.
Yes, board members, just, we're jumping a little bit ahead, we're not gonna take action, but just when we get to that point, I've asked Mr. Kirchner, if you remember at the reorganization, we were a little confused, I guess is the best word, as to exactly what the Vote Tech School Operating Committee member did, so I called Mr. Kirchner, and I actually got an education myself, so I've invited him here tonight to explain what he's done, he's been in this position quite a long time, so I'll let him take the floor and explain that for you, so that you understand what your vote's about.
Here, the Berks Authority, there's different types of authorities, which you read in paper, SIR Authority, Order Authorities, and so forth, which may be operating authorities or financial, this is strictly a financial authority, raising funds for special projects by the PC, the Vote Tech School. I was appointed to this position first, according to a letter I got from Dr. Manell, I found the copy of it, November 21st, 1984. So, I've been, and it's a three-year term, so they kind of say, you know, you're gonna redo them again, so that, it's successful so far. It doesn't pay too well, but it's exciting.
Not as well as we get paid, right?
That's it, we get twice as much. We only meet once, once a year, and that is more or less to keep the authority intact. I think probably authorities by law have to meet every so often, or else they'll go out of business automatically. So, I mean, once a year, and it's basically to see if we have enough members, we have one member for each school district, like the other operating people do, to see who's still around, who passed on, who passed on to another job or something like that, so, we do have a reorganization meeting each year, at which we update a list of members, check the, our balance of our big budget, which is $3,000 or something like that, we can't spend too much. But the idea of the authority is to be available to go out in the market and find funds for any major projects that the Vote Tech might have in the future, immediate future, in other words, we had, the biggest one we had was earlier, and the, let's see, I have the. We had the, the biggest one we had was earlier in the, let's see, I have the Construction Fund Status Report. We voted a bond of about $37.8 million in the 80s to completely do over the VOTEC buildings, including new courses, new equipment, and so forth. The authority got that information together, picked a finance, financer to borrow money from, and then that was approved by the school districts. We can only recommend, we don't, we can't even spend any money without the approval of the school districts. All the school districts have to approve whatever plans we come up with. And it so happens, it was controversial there for a while, whether or not they wanted to spend that much money, very harder times, that was, you know, 20 years ago, the hard times are still tough. But they approved it, and they did go away with it, go ahead with the project, and the VOTEC buildings were vastly improved, including new roofs, of course, the building has to have a new roof somewhere along the line. That was our big, major project, and authorities can go out of business, I guess, but it's evidently very difficult to get a back in this operation. So, we held a meeting once a year, doesn't cost anybody any money. We do get a little meal from the Culinary Arts students, that's about it, those stuff, sir, white steaks, or anything like that, mystery meats, I guess, as well. But then we have a reorganization meeting and so forth, just to keep the authority in business. You would see the letters saying that my three-year term was up, and asking you to either do it or suggest somebody, and I told the officers there that I would be willing to serve another three years if you wanted me to. By the way, background, I do live in Amity Township, I lived there for 40 years. I was a school board member from 75 to 81. It was a six-year term at that time, now four years, of course, so that was a six-year term, but I couldn't run again, because my job put me out of town more often than I would have liked to, to be able to serve with the board. But after a while, then I sort of settled down, and I couldn't stay out of way for public lives, so I ran for Township Supervisor, and was a Township Supervisor 12 years after that. And now I'm still an elected auditor of Amity Township. So, I still, I keep my fingers and things, this is one chance for one night a year. But it is, they want to keep the authority in, available, you know, and there's no, not even a hate to do so, so that, I think they want to maintain it. One representative from each school district, and then the time ever comes that they need to go out for a loan or anything like that, we're organized and ready to go. We just had a meeting recently, it was on November 9th, and basically, all the meetings consisted of this call to order communications, we never have any election of officers, approval of minutes, which are a page and a half long, consideration except treasuries report, approval of audit report, approval of legal firm, disbursement for the, for the board. And that was it. That was all the biggest time concerning the election of officers, they have to throw first and seconds and so forth. So, I was, I was re-elected board chairman again this year, so that, that was our meeting this year. We don't see the minutes for the meeting until next year, it's one year later. So, we got, we did get the minutes from November 3rd, 2010. I don't know, do you, do they send to the school at all? I thought they were.
I'm not, I don't recall whether we see those or not.
To be honest with you, no, because we didn't even know there was a position we had to vote on, so it's nice, we got the minutes.
They didn't know there was authority?
No.
Okay. I'll suggest that they send them to the school district, I don't know, the school districts should be aware of the status of the auditors and so forth. So, I'll suggest that to them, and then see if they begin a call.
Tom, didn't you say in our conversation that they're, if they exhausted their debt, that that was going to be pretty much the end of it? And we talked about 2019 looked like the one that might happen?
2019?
Yes.
I don't know. Does that, well, I think the debt is, the basic loan from years ago was, I was used up on it. You know, I don't know, do you think, suggested they're going out again for another loan?
No, 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 I thought when we had talked, that you had said that the committee would dissolve once the debt was dissolved.
Well, I don't know, my understanding is it's just to stay in place for, there are any problems with finance or whatever.
I can't believe that debt's gone by now. If it's, he's been on the force for 20 something years.
Yeah, but I don't, yeah, I think there might have been some other debt.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, just thank you for serving so long in that position.
One night to look forward to.
Yeah, well, hey, one night of eating a good, one night a year and a good meal, it's not going to be.
Decent meal.
Yeah.
Not great.
We all felt a little security, because we didn't know, I mean.
Yeah, well, we appreciate your service.
When you said that, and I probably paced with the most school board, if they don't know that this organization exists, because you don't hear about it.
No, I mean, do you have your meeting every year in the same month, or is it?
It's November, usually.
Okay. So, probably in December, we should be looking for minutes if we can.
Well, December of next year.
Yeah, well, that's right. But there was a sudden meeting for last year, it just went through, so.
I have a copy of those, I'll give them to.
Yeah, well, probably scan them and send them out to us.
Yep, not a problem.
But thank you, and we'll be voting on that position later on in the agenda.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Moving forward, and, you know, don't feel, Tom, that you have to stay for the whole meeting until we get to that. Moving forward onto routine approvals. I'd recommend the Board of Directors approve the minutes from November 14th, November 21st, December 1st, commite the whole, and December 1st reorganization meeting. Do I have a motion?
How about 8A through C?
A through C. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any comment from the public, from the board? Okay, no comment from the board, any comment from the public? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote?
Yes, I have a first by Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Potts, Mrs. Hamel. Yes. Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Basil.
Yes. Okay, moving on to number nine, presentations by board members, any correspondence we need to be aware of? Okay. BCIU?
All right, my first BCIU update. I have none, we did not meet yet, we'll be meeting, I began, I believe we're going to start meeting next month, I have not been contacted yet about that, but I have nothing right now.
Okay.
He did visit the transition house today.
Oh, good.
So, he's learning the ropes.
All right. BCTC?
Yes, we had our first meeting on December 14th at the West Center, and was, had a meal preceding the meeting, which was nice, presented by the culinary arts students, very good. My first order of business was to go ahead and nominate the, Mr. Mandback, who was retained as the chairperson. Robert Heckman became the vice-chairperson, and Scott Painter, from Y-Missing, became the treasurer. First item of business was to discuss ongoing progress towards a five-acre site that the, that the committee was looking to enter into agreement with, or some things that have to work through before that'll happen. The purpose of this is to train adult students for, if they want to obtain a CDL license. The cost is approximately $5,000 per student. The next nearest facility is in Lehigh County, so there's a need here. They have a pretty good business plan of their projections for revenue, basically looking at a profit after three years is the break-even point. Following that, they discussed, in February, they'll have an announcement going out to the school counselors to invite them to look at some literature as far as their new, new courses and some of the new adult continuing education programs that they're going to roll out. I understand that's going to be somewhat of a media event, held at the Schmidt Center at RAC. Following that, they signed up for the company called Commerge, Conmerge, I should say. What this company does is, basically how it works is, in the time of peak electrical usage, I would say predominantly in the summertime, if the need were to arise to take electricity off the grid, to make that available to other users, they can make a phone call to the school, the school has to go through a manual shutdown to, you know, power down. Basically, they flip the mains on, on, on the building, and they run off their existing generator power for that, for three-year contract, they're approximately $52,000 in revenue. So, that was something that they had confirmed when we were there. Moving on, it appears that the math program, their math offering, academic math, will be phased out. Presently, they only have a few, five participating districts in the math program, and two of those five have notified them that they are going to withdraw in coming school year. So, they're looking at a two-year plan to take the remaining school districts out of that, and turn it back to the school districts to offer that academic math. This led into some complications, because they're having, they had their Chapter 39 Program Evaluation, and what they were finding out in certain cases, that the come-to-school children overriding, and when they're leaving, in some case, the overlap, the combined class was only available to the instructor for about 40 minutes. And that was becoming a problem with that, keeping their certification, because there's too much interruption, trying to, you know, get the, the class, or whatever the instruction was for the, with the teacher, having them, having kids available for only 40 minutes combined, was becoming a problem. And they believe that with the elimination of the math program, that may make that problem worse. So, that's something of a concern going forward. The last item was, they had their state audit, and they had a finding, they had some contractors that did not have their background check documentation done. All that has been completed, and that was their last action item. Next meeting, we held next month, there's, also, I was talking to Mrs. Hamel this afternoon, we're going to both attend an orientation at a site west or east, we haven't been notified yet on the 12th, so, that way, Mrs. Hamel can also see what the Burke's Career and Technology Center's all about.
You know, I was just thinking, you know, it's been, what, two years since we had a meeting there? One year, BCTC invited the board to have a meeting there, and so we had an opportunity, all the board members had an opportunity to tour the facility, they fed us, and then we sat down and had our board meeting there, and maybe you guys can inquire if we could do that again sometime this year.
We actually went out, we saw the diesel mechanic area, and we saw the regular automobile area, the tire repair, and took us through culinary, the kitchen, everything, and the culinary students actually prepared a meal for us, and we actually had our board meeting in one of their rooms, so it was.
It was an eye-opening experience, I thought it was, it was really, it's a wonderful facility, and, and as a new board member, I mean, it was like two years ago, three years ago, we did this, I thought it was a great opportunity to see what BCTC was all about.
I can certainly, I'll make that request, and see what they say, they've been very open to anything we have as far as suggestions. Thinking in closing, just wanted to recognize, we had seven students that were student of the quarter, and we had two that were inducted into the Student National Technical Honor Society. One of those being into culinary arts, and the other one was in diesel mechanics.
Yeah, that's great, that's awesome. Any other questions from board members? Legislative report.
Oh, do the other board members get the PASB email?
I've got the Dr. Otto.
Again, it may take you a short period of time, but, I mean, they sent it to my home email address.
Yeah, I get it.
And it may take you a couple, it may take you, it took me about two months before I actually got an email address, but it, it actually provides quite a bit of information if you read through it. Couple of quick highlights, only the two highlights, House has a bill in front of it, 343, which is talking about reevaluating how the counties do assessments. Every, there's not a common assessment process throughout the state of Pennsylvania, and they're talking about looking to come up with a uniform throughout the state of Pennsylvania where there's, like, what, 67 counties, maybe short on the number there, that'll do the assessments the same way throughout the entire state, to sort of make it even so when, you know, one county, one school district has problems with budgetary numbers, it's apples-apples comparison of how the assessments are done. And the other bill, which was extremely important, that got passed, was, and sent to the governor at a 48 to 2 vote, was the state bill, the Senate Bill 1183, which says, it's a student assault bill, which basically takes everything from a teacher on down to a volunteer that has any type of inappropriate contact with a student, it'll be a third-degree felony. The key to this is they eliminated the language that said, the state of Pennsylvania, your age of consent is 16, it doesn't matter, if you're classified as a student, it's an assault. You can be a 17-year-old senior, and even though it's an age of consent of 16, it's still considered an assault, so, those are the two major things that came out.
Okay. Any questions by board members? Seeing none, any other reports? Anything in buildings and grounds?
Other than just an update on continuing to replace the high school heater system?
Right.
It's going very well.
Okay. Financial approvals? Do I have a motion for one or?
11A through E.
A through E. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from board members? Okay, seeing none? Any comments from the public? Please.
On 12?
We're on 11. Section 11 right now.
I'm sorry, this isn't the regular, no, okay, this isn't the regular school board? Is this the workshop?
This is the voting meeting.
Voting meeting.
So, we're voting on items A through E, 11A through E right now, so if you have a comment on those items, we'll take it, but if not, then you can wait until the next section. Okay? Mr. Kurtz?
I have a quick thing on item E. If Mr. Kurtz there is an attendance, I'd like to thank you for the $800 donation in the Optimist Club, or the $100 donation for the interactive whiteboard from the high school.
Yeah, we've had a fund that we work with the school districts on, we've had some banquets and so forth. This year, we thought we'd try something new, so we touched on this in McAvoy, and suggested, say, you know, we have $800, what do you want to do with it? And he didn't say, oh, you know, I don't give a damn. But then he did investigate, and then he came back and said, you know, I have the one whiteboard, and I get more, and it was, you know, during the crisis, so he donated 800, and I think he's about throwing a couple extra bucks with some other ones. And again, what, I understand it's going to order pretty fast, and it's, like, the operation.
Thank you.
Please express our thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, any other comments? Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Okay, I have a first by Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Potts, Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel.
Yes.
Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, on to 12A.
12A through D, with the exception of, and I don't know the number, or Technology Director.
C1E.
C1E.
A through D, with the exception of C1E. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any comments from board members? Okay, seeing none. Any questions or comments from the public on 12A through D, except C1E?
Exactly what, C1E.
Oh, we're not voting on C1E yet.
I'm doing that one separately.
Okay, so this is all of them but that one.
Next.
All right, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, I have a first by Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Wolf, Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel.
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to 12C1E, do I have a motion?
C1E.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
Second, any discussion from the board? I'll just, do you want to have a comment about this? I mean, we, we've been interviewing for a new IT director for some time, Mr. Haas interviewed with board members last week, I believe.
Interviewed with the administration prior to that.
Interviewed with the administration prior to that, Mr. Jacobs, as well as Dr. Otto and some others of our staff.
Mrs. Trainor.
Mrs. Trainor. And the board actually met with Mr. Haas earlier this evening, and we've, we're extending to him and, and an offer to take the Director of Technology. to him an, an offer to take the Director of Technology position effective January 12, 2012. And having said that, any other comments from board members?
Admend that date. What is it, 24th?
The 24th.
Excuse us. Admend that to January 24th.
Do we need a formal...
Do you accept that amendment? And Mr. Wolf, do you accept that amendment?
Or actually, I think it's Mr. Potts.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have that clear?
Yes.
Right date, January 24th, 2012. Okay. Any comments from the public?
No. Did we hire, just hired somebody?
We did hire someone, he had to resign.
Oh, okay. And the, the starting salary, is that, is that the same?
Starting salary is the same.
Both neutral.
It was the same, I thought it was. I just wanted a question because no one, we honored Mr. Jacobs. I shook the guy's hand, I thought, I didn't know he was an interim, I thought he was just a, okay.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, just have a question before we do that. Did we have to do something to accept the amendment? Do I have to do something?
It's a friendly amendment, so you don't have to have a formal motion to amend. When the board member who makes the motion and the board member who seconded the motion both agree to the revision or proposed amendment, that's called a friendly amendment. So it's, the motion being voted on is the amended motion.
And it's the 12C1E that we're voting on?
With the revised word.
With the revised date.
Yeah, the revised.
Just changing it from the 12th to the, that was just the typo on my part, I wrote it down wrong.
12th through the 24th.
Okay.
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 You ready for the roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I have a first by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Potts. Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I'd like to welcome Mr. Haas to the Daniel Boone Area School District family.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Great. We'll see you here January 24th. Okay, moving on to 13, programs.
13A through D.
Motion for A through D. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Does this include the revised conference schedules we will provide with committee of the whole?
Yes, that's on here.
Okay, I have a question. I noticed here 12.5 hours is the original and then next year, 2012, 2013, and then for 20, yeah, for 2012, 2013, we're going up to 14.5 hours. Is that going to cost the district any more money?
No.
Okay.
I actually had a question too, Ms. Trainer. When I was looking at this, I, I was trying to figure out how, how, this was to the benefit of the parents, right? So I was just sort of sitting there thinking to myself, the parents that work during the day, who may not be able to get time off to come in and meet with the teachers, to have the parent-teacher discussions, how are they benefited by this? I mean, is it possible if, if the students aren't coming in and you're having a, a service day just for meeting with parents, that you couldn't set the hours from, let's say, 12 to 8 or 1 to 9 or something like that?
We've had a lot of response from parents that if there was more daytime hours, that they wouldn't come in the evening. It's more difficult for some of them to come in the evening. And so we're thinking that population will shift, which will then open up all those evening hours for parents that are working.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of time, again, as a parent that goes to these, I mean, we populate, we go to night hours because there, there's nothing in the day that fits, that we could go. If they had them in the day, I know personally, I'd go during the day and not go at night. So as you said, it would free up the, the time slots that I'm using.
Comes a logjam.
For a parent that works at night, that works during the day, that doesn't, not as flexible as my schedule.
Yeah, I'm just asking a question because, you know, I...
That's our theory from...
Yeah, I mean, the parent-teacher conferences I go to, I have to go to them in the evenings because that's the only time I can make them. So, you know, when I was looking at this scheduling change, it didn't seem to me that there was an additional evening hours there that were being offered to allow parents that were...
No, we're hoping, we're listening to parents saying that they would shift up into daytime if there was more time there because it's easier for them to get out during the day. So, and a lot of it is now where we're, especially at the middle school, we're encouraging them to bring children to the meeting and so they prefer to bring them during the day than at night. So we figured we'd pilot it for a year. It also, not just looking at the parent conference night, but the back-to-school opportunities to meet the teacher with having two days back-to-back for K to 8 staff in August, that's going to give us more time to reach out to parents before the school year actually starts to do those sessions, which we don't have the time to do right now. So there's a couple of different possibilities there that we've been hearing different points of, you know, parent suggestions over the years and this is the first time we're, with PSSA and Easter being where it was, it really gave us some time to move some days around to try it out.
And if I'm not mistaken, maybe I missed it, but at the high school, there were two days. One was in the afternoon, one was in the evening. If you have two kids, you automatically go one in the afternoon and one in the evening instead of taking both of them in the afternoon, which would have gave that evening slot a day. You were, you, you had no other choice but to go to the evening for the second child.
Well, I personally had to miss them because I was unable to get there during the day and that evenings are the only time I could go, and my husband. So I don't know if adding more day hours would actually help out families in my situation.
Well, we're thinking that some of the current people signing up for evenings, as Mr. Shaheen said, will move up into daytime and that will open up the staff's evening hours. If we find that it doesn't, we'll come back in the 13, 14 calendar with a different configuration. But we're thinking this will be a solution for us.
But I just, I want to be clear here, only, there's only one night offered, correct?
No, there's, there's, the, there'll be a Thursday after school, like 4 to 6, that kind of time, depending on the, the grade levels. And then there'll be, Monday night will be your, your all-day and then evening hours the way we have it right now. And then there'll be more daytime hours. So there'll actually be two, just as we have now, there'll be two evening slots, different two groups of evening slots.
But one for the grade school, one for the high school.
They'll be simultaneous. They'll both be open both days, the slots.
Right, so if you have one in middle school and one in high school, likelihood of being able to get to both of those in, in one evening would be difficult.
So you could do one on the Thursday of the week before and then one on the Monday of the week of Thanksgiving.
If they're available.
Right.
I'm just, I mean, I, you know, it's not my issue, but I'm just wondering, like, if there's a shift, you know, from, when do these things start on the calendar again? They start at 8:30 in the morning or something like that?
12:30 PM on Monday, November 19th for K to 5, 12:00 PM for grades 6 to 12. And then in the evening, on Monday, November 19th, from 6 to 9 PM for K to 5. And then at the 6, for 6 to 12, at 6 to 8:30 PM.
Right now, daytime is packed.
Yeah.
And so there isn't shift space to begin with. So we're hoping that just that opening up of more daytime will move people into those daytime hours.
I don't think there's ever going to be a system that's going to take care of all different cases. I mean, we think this is about as responsive as we can be based on the feedback that we've gotten.
And there's never been a parent that I've had personal conversation with that if they really needed to talk to a teacher, that the teacher didn't make himself available to have a conversation with them, even if they have to make a phone call at night. So we always do reach out to them at whatever time we can reach them.
The administration doesn't have, if this is the best course going forward, then I don't see any problems.
It's a pilot and we'll see what we can do with it.
And as you said, there's still always the one-on-one.
Right.
When you can get there type of incentive.
Just having the few days even in August is going to offer up an awful lot of opportunities for us right now that we don't currently have.
Yeah, I mean, I might just suggest, you know, throwing a survey out there on, on the website or something else for parents to, you know, pick the hours that you would come type of thing and let them populate the hours and you're going to get a statistical distribution as to what hours work best.
We're doing that for the February ones, the first time to see what kind of spread we have.
And then, and then set the hours according to what the parents say, as opposed to, we're setting hours and then we kind of figure out, does that work, does that not work? Let the parents pick the hours and then you'll see where most people want to come and then we set our hours accordingly so that we're...
We do get something sent home now.
Right.
That obviously...
Principals would be able to tell you.
We need a parent to fill that out and submit it back as long as our student takes it to the board.
That's what I'm saying, if it's online, people could say, well, these are the hours I would come.
As long as you can fill that slot, obviously it might be beaten, but I think ours...
Seems that the building level right now, principals feel that that shift would best meet their needs.
Yeah, take babysit, let's see what happens.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, I'm just throwing out a suggestion that, you know, it seemed to me you'd want to get the parental feedback that gives you, that populates the data for you and then you set the hour accordingly.
Unfortunately, sometimes that, that backfires on you where people assume that you're going to take the recommendations and go with it. And when they select few hours they want, then they're upset, so. Let's, I think we try what we have, see where it goes and if we have to go up, you know, it still doesn't meet the needs, or get a larger percentage of parents attending the conferences, you go from there.
When does this have to be printed? When does this schedule, because you usually put out one of these, one of these out.
That doesn't go to press until August. The calendar in front of you has to go to the Department of Ed at the end of January.
Yeah, we heard.
End of January. But did you already have this set for next year or just end of January?
That's what we're reporting.
That's what you're doing tonight.
Okay. So you'll make sure in August it's printed?
No, it's next full year.
No. And because there's a change in the requirements for our professional classified staff for August, I said to Dr. Otto, I thought it was in our best interest to be able to give them as much notice as possible that they would have an additional day in August. That's why I brought it earlier for you.
Just for the benefit of the new board members, this is an annual process. This is something that is one of the, one of the key functions of the school board, actually, based on our recommendations, set the school calendar for the next year.
But we're changing it. It's been like this ever since I've been...
Right.
...had kids at school, so this is just slightly different. So I was just curious.
Good questions.
Any other questions or comments by board members? Okay, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Okay, so this is 13A through D.
A through D, yep.
Okay, I have a first by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Wolf. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, on to 14A. It's recommended the Board of Directors approve revised policy 005, organization.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, great. Any discussion?
Just rest everybody's memory, that is where we added the curriculum instruction committee as a standing committee moving forward.
Right. Okay, no discussion for the board? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Okay, I have a first by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Potts. Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Kurtz.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to transportation. Anything on the transportation?
I'd like to make a motion that we reconstitute the Transportation Committee at the January meeting. Right now, the committee's been, it's a ad hoc committee, but we're continually meeting and doing things for the same board members for two years now. I just think a couple of fresh faces on that committee could, could be beneficial.
Are you recommending terminating that committee for now?
I recommend terminating it and then reformatting it, or reforming it in January.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm in favor of that as well. Any other comments from board members? Okay. Any comments from anyone in the public? All right, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote on that?
I have a first by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Potts.
Correct.
And you do it in motion.
Yes, to terminate the Transportation Committee and then reformat it in January.
Reconstitute, yeah, in January.
Reform.
Reform it in January. Okay, Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to old business. It's recommended that the Board of Directors approve adjustment of the term of BCIU Representative Connor Kurtz ending June 12 rather than June 14.
Actually, can we take 16A and B together?
Yeah, we can do, sure, we can do that. That's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a second? Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, why are we, why are we adjusting Mr. Kurtz's term?
Me, myself as well.
Okay. It didn't come from you then.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why there was adjustment to this?
The BCIU, this term actually ends in June 2012 rather than in 2014.
Okay, because he's taken a term of a board member that...
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Right.
Do all terms of the BCIU expire at the same time?
They're on a kind of a separate calendar, so when we come back for next year, we'll simply have to.
So we have to appoint somebody again in June.
Right.
So in June, we'll have to move forward.
Correct. Is it a fresh BCIU board after?
It's usually stacked.
Okay.
Yeah, each, exactly.
All right. Okay, is there any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Okay, first by Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, on sixteen C. I don't really have any comments on the budget discussion for budget year 2012, 13, unless you have any updates from the committee of hold meeting.
No, I just need a decision from the board whether you want to pass the resolution this evening to not go above the index, or whether you want to give the okay for me to post a preliminary budget on January 3rd, and then you'll vote on the 13th.
Right.
Just, if I may, may I interject as well? Since we have Mr. Subers here, and again, for the benefit of new board members, Brian, do you want to do just a little summary of what we're going through here, since this is the first time through for the new board members?
Well, sure. Under Act One, you're required to prepare, publish, and approve a preliminary budget by Jan, for this year, by January 20th of 2012. Alternatively, you don't have to go through that preliminary budget process if you agree upfront not to increase taxes by more than the index. But in addition to being limited to the index, you waive your right to apply for any exceptions under Act One, and were to apply for a referendum under Act One if you pass this resolution. And that resolution has, has to be passed by January 5th.
Right, which is why we would do it between.
We do have it. Depending on which way you go, there is a resolution prepared, but that's the board's decision.
And the index, and the index amount is a little over $600,000.
It's like $600,000 increase, or in terms of revenue, it's $600,000, a .6 mils increase.
And by, by not, you know, that doesn't mean by not voting on that, limiting it to the index now, doesn't mean that's not what you want to do ultimately, or even raise taxes by a lesser amount. It just keeps the options optioned.
Right, you can't, you can't. So the, as you guys recall, at the committee of the whole meeting, we sort of discussed this, it was discussed at the finance committee prior to committee of the whole, and I think what the consensus of the finance committee was at the time was to leave all options on the table for now in terms of the budget, just because we don't know what levers we will have available to us to pull in order to close the budget come June 30th. And not having really any information at this point from the state really kind of put us in a bind. We are preliminarily looking at like a $3 million deficit in our budget, but on the revenue side, we're making some leaps. We're just taking, you know, numbers out of the air in terms of our assumptions. We're assuming level funding from last year, that there's no increases, but we're also assuming there's no decreases either. And, you know, so it could be worse than we anticipate, or it could be better, we don't really know.
Things are very quiet in Harrisburg. We have no real direction. Usually, there's rumblings at this point.
Even at this point, I mean, last year, we didn't have. The problem is, we're 30 days ahead of time because of where the primary falls this, next year, so, I mean, this is normally a January conversation we have instead of a December conversation.
Why does the primary move the whole schedule?
Because you have to post things so, so far ahead of.
In case, in case of a referendum.
Right.
If we have to go to referendum, let's say that the district decides it's going to go to referendum, raise taxes beyond the Act One index and beyond special exceptions, then we would need to prepare that referendum, we got to present it to the public, it has to be ready, you know, so the public's educated on.
That's presented at the primary.
Then you have a special election.
So whatever the primary is, you back it up to when we have to approve.
And that's pursuant to Act One. Sets forth, you know, a schedule based on days before the primary election. And the primary was moved up because of the presidential election, Pennsylvania's desire to be more upfront in that process. So it's shortened your budgetary process, or accelerated it, I should say.
Right, but on the, on Harrisburg's side, obviously, I mean, they're, they're taking their time to provide the school districts the information on their own schedule, so, not that we necessarily have any more information than we have now come January, but sometimes we'll have more information in regards to, you know, insurance costs, or something else that may come in on the, on the expense side that we can refine a little bit. But from the revenue side, obviously, we're making a pretty big assumption. So again, the recommendation from the finance committee, which was Mr. Shaheen, Mr. Cermonero, and myself, was, you know, let's leave all options on the table for now, and then we'll move forward. It doesn't limit us in what we want to do ultimately as a board at any time in the future, whereas the resolution says.
Which would mean, what you just said would mean not to do this resolution.
Right, if we do do this resolution, then what we're saying is, we're not going to raise taxes above the index, and we're not going to go to special exception, and that's the end of the discussion. You, in March, you can't change your mind. In April or May, you can't change your mind. That's what it is.
Yeah, what it basically does is, we get to that point, the only thing we got left is headcount and program, and that is it. So we don't want to handcuff ourselves into that situation, so.
But, please. We should be realistic about this. A referendum will fail. Are we going to apply for exceptions? There's going to be an article in the newspapers, happened with the other districts have done this, Daniel Boone plans X percent tax hike.
It's already been done.
I don't, I don't see what we gain from doing this other than not tying our hands. But we're not going to, we're not going to do a referendum, most likely.
Right.
And exceptions, we didn't apply for them last year. I don't.
We didn't, we didn't use them.
We didn't use them.
Just because you apply for them does not mean.
And, and the number of, the number of exceptions we can apply for this year drastically last, there's only two of them.
Special education.
Special education.
And retirement.
Special education.
And retirement. Last year, there was healthcare and a bunch of other stuff that we can't, they're, they're no longer there, they were taken out, so. It does, there's not a benefit for applying for, just letting it go and letting it post the budgets, but we, as the finance committee, recommend it.
My, my thought process, I mean, look, I don't like, I don't relish the thought of raising taxes. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm pretty much an anti-tax guy, everybody kind of knows that. But at the same time, I try to be realistic, and I try to, and if I ask, I ask of other people sometimes, hey, look, you got to leave all options on the table, whether it's, whatever the subject matter is in when it comes to discussions of the budget, whether it's curriculum, it's extracurriculars, it's, you know, salaries and benefits, it's all these different things that make up our budget that we can, we can have discussions about. And I, my personal opinion is, in these dire times, everything needs to be on the table as an option for solving the deficit problem. I may not agree with everything that's there, but in consideration of, of what we're facing, I think it's, in my opinion, we need to have every single lever available to us to pull if, if we actually have to pull.
What we don't want to do is back ourselves into a corner where we get down, and we applied for it, agreed with the resolution, and we get down and we're all about 600, we get down to about $750,000, and there's nothing.
Let's say you use fund balance, you get, you know, you get some concessions or some sort of agreements with your collective bargaining partners, you, you cut programming, you've gone into extracurriculars, and you still haven't made the. Now, we can still, I just want to say, we can still raise taxes up to the index, even if we pass the resolution.
Correct.
This is just to go above and beyond the index.
Right, correct.
To do a referendum and to apply for Act One exceptions, which, there are only two of them.
Right.
Which, last year, we applied for them, we said.
And didn't use them.
Which ones were we granted?
All of them.
All of them.
With the exception of, which ones? We had to go to court for two or three of them.
Well, that was the Court of Commons we used ones, the ones that we applied to PD or we approved, or there was four, five of them.
Do you remember which?
Not off the top of my head.
I could probably tell you in a minute.
They don't exist anymore.
Mr. Kurtz, is if we, it gives us the option, we don't want to back ourselves into the corner. I understand what you're talking about, and the odds are of having to go above the index, we don't know that yet. And we didn't last time, I don't remember we've ever gone, we've always gone, but you don't know what it's going to bring. I mean, if the government comes back and cuts another $2 million, we don't know that. And if the government comes back and cuts it, or, or, you know, we're dealing with an unknown. If the governor was to come in and say, look, we're going to give you a flat over last year, then we got a number we know. We don't know that, we don't, because we're.
When will we know that? We're not going to know that for a long time.
February, he goes his address in February.
He has to publish his budget, yes, the preliminary budget's published, as you said, in February, so we'll have an idea of at least what he said he's going to give us. Now, whether that ends up passing, we don't know, but at least we'll have an idea.
But this decision needs to be made for that, so we don't know.
So there were four exceptions last year, special education, maintenance of local revenues or AIE per ADM.
What is that?
Actual instructional expenditure.
That's not available.
That's gone.
Maintenance of selected revenue sources, which was also the one we went to the Court of Cali.
No.
No, no, it was different.
That was different. That one's gone as well, right? And then the retirement contributions. And altogether, they made up one and a half, almost one and three quarters, or almost two mils last year, those special exceptions.
These exceptions are slimy, I don't like them, they're not, they're, I don't like them at all. I like what they do in New Jersey, where voters approve all budgets for schools.
Well, they do in many states. New York is the same thing.
Yeah, New York, Connecticut.
It is what it is, and until they pass that law, we're stuck with what they give us.
Yeah. Well, you know, I mean, here's, I'm willing, I'm willing to listen to your argument, so I mean, obviously, that's what we're here for, is to discuss the issue.
I mean, I don't see, I, I see this hurting us in the news, in the news. I don't know how many people, I mean, where people are going to say, you're complaining on raising taxes, which we're not necessarily, we don't know what we're going to do yet. We don't want, a referendum will fail, and exceptions are, I'm not in favor of applying for exceptions, I don't defend anybody else's, just because of the inherent nature, I don't think, I don't like that, I don't know, that's just my opinion as a board member. I am in favor of the resolution because of those reasons. I'm just one member, that's how I feel.
If I may, may I, may I add in this conversation? I would just throw a word of caution out, as all of you consider this, that we're in for a very, very difficult round of, on our end administratively, looking for the cuts that we need to close this gap. And I would be very cautious as a board to tie your hands beyond, there may be some real cuts that people do not want to face. So it's going to, it's, it's going to be like the last two years, just on a little bit smaller scale. I mean, I, I see Mrs. Torodowski, she kind of came on board on two of the most difficult years that school districts have seen in decades. So I'm just going to caution, especially for the new board members, this is going to be a very difficult and painstaking process. So to keep the options that you can on the table, I think is, is important. Again, I'm just, I'm a non-voting member, but I'm advising you, if you've sat here for the last two years and watched what we've gone through, you need options. And that's kind of where I'll end my, my little editorial on that.
Again, I, I understand, I appreciate, I mean, Mr. Basil and I share the same, I mean, I got on the board, couldn't beat EBTAs, hadn't voted except for last year, didn't vote for tax increase, okay? It is what it is. I don't want to tie my hands to the point that, you know, we cut as much as we can. And, I mean, it may be fourth and fifth grade ban this year, it may be extracurriculars, it could be sports at the middle school, we don't know where we're going with this. But if we get everything all in the bucket, and we're still short $750,000, that, we're using as much fund balance as we can, and we got nothing left, and we're limited, we're $150,000 over, we've still got to cut again. And, and that's the only, and that's the only issue. I don't want to cut my hand. I'm not, I'm not going to pass a budget that goes over the index, I'm going to be very hard to press to vote for it, I'm going to be very hard pressed to vote for a budget that includes the, includes these exceptions. But I think if we don't, we at least owe it to leave it out there so we can say no later.
I think from a historical perspect, I mean, last year, every year we do this thing, and we do it a little bit different.
We never used them in the past.
And, and we never, right, well, and last year, what we did was, we kind of, we were working off a spreadsheet, which you guys don't have available to you because you weren't on the board, but it was almost a, an all-in sort of spreadsheet. And the administration sat down, and they said, look, if you guys are going to cut everything and throw in, you know, the kitchen sink and everything else, here's our list of everything you can do, and here's a dollar figure tied with all those different things. And, so that's on the expense side. And on the revenue side, here's the money that you have to play with. It's the, the tax, Act One increase, it's the special exceptions, and here's your general fund balance, okay? So those, that's what you have to play with over here, and this is what you have to play with in terms of expenses. Now, if you guys can go as a board, and talk to your collective bargaining partners, and work out some other additional ways to save money, then great, that just comes to the table as well. And there is, I call it the stoplight sort of spreadsheet, we kind of looked at those lists of cuts, and we said, these are all the things that we can agree on that can go, and that we kind of green-lighted those. These are the ones that, for whatever reason or another, some of us liked the idea of cutting, some of us didn't, and we weren't quite settled on those. And at the bottom of the list were some red light ones, which we just said, we're all in agreement that this will be the last thing that has to go, if we have to do it. And so, and, and that's sort of the premise that we worked with. If you're suggesting doing something different than, which is to limit to just Act, Act One and not do any special exceptions, then I would suggest you can make a motion, and somebody can second the motion, we could vote on it, and then we can go from there. If somebody wants to make a motion to do something different, we can go the other way, or make a motion not.
I will make a motion.
But before you do that, I mean, if there's other discussion, let's have at it now, and then we'll certainly do the motion, so.
Well, I remember last year, we went down, we called the final budget meeting, because we were very undecided with some areas.
We walked pretty quickly, didn't we?
And we went back to that budget feeling a lot more comfortable at the end, but that took us near the end. Obviously, I don't want to see taxes raised, but obviously, at what point are you going to hurt the quality of this school to where you're not going to get residents to come into this district to buy a 200, or 100, or $400,000 house to send their kids to the school? Because we're not going to have a program. They're going to go.
Well, we haven't, we haven't reached that point yet.
Not yet, but obviously, this is getting.
Yeah, we haven't cut anything yet.
We're getting to an area, though, that this year could be difficult.
We're down the program cuts now, to be honest with you, we're down the program cuts. That's all that's left.
Because I mean, I go around town, I mean, township, I find houses that have been overlooked upon, and people are hurting, and I don't want to give them the idea that this board is planning on raising taxes. That is my opinion. I'm not in favor of that.
I mean, we just went through in the beginning of this, this meeting with so many children who can't, whose parents can't afford food.
Right.
We're asking them to spend more of their, their money for the school when we haven't begun to even look at what potentially we could still get done.
It's Christmas time, I don't want people opening up a newspaper, Daniel Boone's planning a tax hike, reading matter on Christmas, these are people who are struggling to buy paper, guess what their children, I, I don't know, I, I don't like it, I don't like exceptions, I, I don't, I'm going to be, I'm in favor of the resolution. Of course, I'm only one of however many are here.
Well, it, it all stems and starts at Harrisburg. So, you know, our hands are somewhat tied. It's not as easy as you think. And with him with the vouchers, you know, we're taking money away, I think we should have started with trying to replace school property tax for another level, and then went into the vouchers. Now we're taking money away, and we have no, no room to replace it. So you're going to have to look into that.
I, I just think, Mr. Kurtz, you got to look at it from the standpoint, and I'm not in favor of raising taxes in any way, shape, or form, but I don't want to get down to the beginning of May and still be 2.4 million dollar gap. And, well, right now, it's 2.4 million, because if you take the $600,000 we can raise based upon the index, we've got 2.4 million dollar gap. The governor's already said, has hinted that there's not going to be any more money.
Right.
And when he says there's not going to be any more money, there could be less money. Okay? And that's, that's my concern, I mean, I, if, if you weren't involved, we were in the, and we got, we had a little process, we know, we saw what we cut last year, we saw that was left on the table, and I don't know there's $3 million with the stuff left on the table.
Well, again, I don't.
I'll just comment, if we have to do 2.4 million dollars of cuts, there will be drastic changes in the way that Daniel Boone School District may look.
Yeah.
I'll just say that, and I can't give you the details because we haven't gone back, but I can tell you, 2.4 million dollars of cuts is going to be bloody.
Yes. I don't support a referendum either, or, or support doing the referendum, I don't support not doing a referendum, but I, I think we need to leave, because I agree with, a referendum will not pass.
No.
Okay? I get just as many calls from people saying, telling me, you know what, just raise taxes, we need, we need the program, as I do with, I can't afford a tax increase. You've got people on both sides of the aisle. And so.
Especially, we don't have any information from the state.
Right.
I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather defend not punting it, you know, just punting it down the road, and, and settle, instead of handcuffing yourself, and then you can't go back, you can't undo what you did, because I don't want to raise taxes either. But I don't, also, there, there's a lot of outcry last year for, you know, going to half-day kindergarten. That hurt a lot, that affected a lot of people, but.
Everybody's going to come and say, don't eliminate this program, don't limit that program, but nobody has a solution how to recover the dollars that those programs will give us back in the budget.
Well, I, I don't know, are you going to prepare another document, Dr. Otto, like you did last year with the painful cuts, I, I don't know.
That'll be part of the process.
That'll be part of the process. I, to be honest with you, Mr. Kurtz, we have not gone to that level, but I only speak To be honest with you, Mr. Kurtz, we have not gone to that level, but I only speak globally in having sat through two of the most difficult budgets in decades to know that $2.4 million of cuts don't come without pain.
I think, I think the Finance Committee, I mean, our goal is, and I've been looking at the numbers from last year, and looking at the variances from what we budget versus what we spent, and, you know, I think one of the issues that came up during the, during the last Finance Committee meeting was, you know, we're already spending more on some of these out-of-district placements than we anticipated for this year. And so, we asked the administration to sort of refine that to give us some better estimates and numbers, and we'll have those in January to kind of quantify that. But, you know, so those are some concerns. I think, I think our goal would be that in January, we would ask the administration to come forward with a list of recommendations. I mean, we, the sooner we start those conversations, the better, you know, so that everybody understands what's at stake and what's on the table, and hopefully, we can start coming, putting some ideas together on how to best solve those things.
May I interject again?
Yeah, go ahead.
Again, for the new board members, two years ago, we kind of got caught off guard by all of this. I mean, we'll admit it, we didn't realize the shortfalls that were going to be coming. Last year, we didn't get caught off guard, and this year, we know what's coming. So, we're, we're a little bit in, of a more prepared state to deal with the difficulties that this budget's going to bring, even though it's only $3 million, and in two years in a row, it was up around $6 million deficit, and we found a way to close it. But that came with some very serious and painful cuts, as you all saw. This year's going to be no different. Don't let that amount fool you. There are still some painful cuts. We've become a lighter school district in two years.
We couldn't have done it, I mean, well, I guess we could have, we could have raided the general fund balance and.
And other schools have done that, other schools have done that, and end up in a sad state of affairs when it comes to paying the bills.
But just understand, like, right now, we've got about $4 million in our general fund balance, but our working capital is two. Okay? So, in August, we spend $2 million before we receive, between July 1st and the third week of August, we spent approximately $2, $2.1 million in working capital, money we don't have, right? Because we spend all, everything down to zero by the time we get to June 30th, and then we start our new budget year, but we don't receive any of our revenues until, like, you know, we get some state money, I think, at the end of July, and then we get a big lump of our local taxes in August, and then September, October, November, we get the bulk of our cash. So, for, we're short money for July and August, about $2, $2.1 million bucks. And that doesn't mean you can't go out and get a short-term loan, it doesn't mean you can't spend your fund balance down to zero, although most people recommend against that. But, we, we made a determination two years ago that our working capital needs in terms of our general fund budget are about $2 million. So, you know, when you're talking about revenue, we've got about $2 million there, and we can fight over how that's.
Let's be clear that that $4 million isn't all available, some of it's designated for other things that can't be touched, such as.
Well, some's designated for budgeting for this year.
Yeah, some of it's also designated for other things that we just can't, so we don't have $4 million.
No, I don't, I believe that's the undesignated general fund. The only one's designated is about, what is it, $600,000?
Whatever it is to balance this year.
Again, it is designated, so we can't touch all of it, so.
I want to say, if some programs do go away, that doesn't mean they're gone forever. They can come back when times are better.
Absolutely right.
I mean, that's what's happening, people are in their homes, in their budgets, they're saying, we can't afford it this year, maybe next year, but for now, we can't. And I think we, we should do the same. I don't, I'm not in favor, I've said it before, I've applied for exceptions, the referendum will fail, it's a waste of time. I, I don't know if it ties our hands just as much as our hands are tied anyway. With that, I guess I'm going to make my motion.
Okay.
I'm going to make my motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, we have a second. I'll second. Any other comment from board members on the resolution?
I think, again, just with experience, I think it's a mistake if we both approve it, but we'll go from there.
Okay. Any comments from the public on this discussion? On the motion? The motion to put forward a resolution?
Well, it's just been discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like the chairman said, don't back yourself in a corner, put all your lines in the water, take what you get, when you get it. Don't put loose around your neck, wait for it to pull tight. Get your back against the wall, maybe something there, you'll be able to do something. And as far as people's going to pick up the paper, guess what, people pick up the paper and see a bad news every day of the week.
That's true.
And that's not helping. But, in any event, I think there was a comment about New Jersey, too, resulted, well, if we can run this state like Virginia, Virginia, like I said before, the state lottery takes care of all the taxes, school taxes, that would be wonderful, too, in this state, but that's a very land world, you're never going to get, it is Harrisburg. And also, when you say about cuts, and I know it's going to be, please remember, like I've been saying all along, education is first, extracurriculars second, let's keep the education in-house, and if you've got, if you've got to eliminate all the sports, all the curriculum, eliminate them. That's all it is to it.
I have a parliamentary question. If this motion to pass, how many votes does it need with people present today?
Majority of the quorum, it would be four votes.
Four votes. So.
It's not, it's not a section 508 vote.
Does it take five?
The final budget takes five, but this is a preliminary, this isn't even, this, this does not require a majority of the board. The school code designates what motions require a majority of the board, this isn't one of the listed motions. So, this would be a majority of the quorum, which would be four votes this evening.
Okay. I'm not disputing that. Thank you for, thank you for your answer. I think that's a shame that four can basically decide on an important issue like this, because if this motion passes, it does seriously affect this district. So, I, I'm urging you to vote against the motion.
I think a certain motion won't pass, but I think it's good to get it on the record.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, can we get a roll call vote then? Oh, I'm sorry, was there a comment from the public on this issue? I thought so. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, I have a first by Mr. Kurtz, a second by Mr. Basil.
And just to be clear, so this is important, if you vote yes, your vote for the resolution limiting us to the index, only the index, with no exceptions.
Right, that's the, that's the motion. Yep.
Okay, Mr. Shaheen?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Mrs. Hamel? Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
No.
Mr. Basil?
No.
Motion defeated.
Okay. All right, I admire passion, and I'm in agreement with you philosophically, I just.
I think we all are.
Yeah, I, truth be told, I'm going to have a hard time with this, you know, given what's been going on the last couple of years, so, but it's neither here nor there, so.
Thank you for the discussion and allowing me to express.
That's why we're here, and quite frankly, you know, I think we should always have an open and frank discussion about any issue. I think every board member should be heard, and, you know, if you have a motion you want to put forward, I will always support a motion to be out there, to be voted on, yes or no. And that's the way I sort of feel about it, up and down.
I have another wrinkle. I need to know from.
A wrinkle? No.
I need to know from the board. I will be posting then the preliminary budget with the documents that I passed out to you, as Mr. Basil said, with about a $3.1 million deficit at the moment, on January 3rd, and you guys will actually be voting on the 23rd to accept that, which again, is just a.
23rd of January.
January, just procedural thing. Does the board?
The 13th.
No, the 13th, I have to make it available, or the 13th, I have to put in the newspaper. The 23rd would be your vote, I had to back.
Mr. Kurtz, please remind me, like, don't when we vote on that, that make it very certain we have no intent of raising taxes to $2.1 million, but.
Well, that's the question.
Well, by definition, we have to go to referendum.
Right, you would have to go to referendum.
Well, I have to apply for the exceptions.
Right, you need to apply for the exceptions.
Correct, but my problem, or my, my question to the board is, in the preliminary budget right now, there's no use of fund balance. Does the board want something in there for preliminary budget, or do they want it all reflected in the tax increase?
What we put in last year.
Well, last year, we used a million and a half as a placeholder in the beginning of the discussions.
We do the same thing, a million and a half as a placeholder.
For the preliminary?
For the preliminary budget.
Okay.
And that'll bring it under the referendum threshold?
Oh, yeah, I would think so.
Yes.
Well, you, no, you still have to apply for exceptions.
Right, the exceptions, with the exceptions in the million and a half things and under the referendum threshold.
And there's no guarantee we're going to get the exception.
No.
And even if you do, that does not mean you have to.
Yes, correct. We haven't used them yet.
Actually, Daniel, why don't you do, why don't you find out what the exceptions are?
I have them, and I have the estimate, I'm sorry that I didn't bring it to them.
And whatever the balance, and whatever the balance is, it would be fund balance. You know what I'm saying? Like, if you end up at 1.4 million with taxes, and you're short $100,000, how are we going to, you know what I'm saying, you need to have the authority from the board to go, instead of saying 1.5 million is a placeholder, it's going to be 1.6.
The way it works on your preliminary budget, your preliminary budget has to be balanced.
Has to be balanced.
But you can show a, a tax increase, which PDE's going to tell you is above your index, so you have to correct it before your final budget is approved.
And maybe you can correct it by using exceptions, going to referendum, formatting cuts.
Cuts, formatting cuts, so.
All procedural. I'm just trying to give you latitude procedurally, so that you don't, you know, we're not tied up.
It's easier for me if you tell me 1.5, it's easier for me to work backwards.
Okay, that's fine.
Because what I have right now is just an estimate on how to figure out the exceptions. It's not an official, it hasn't been opened yet or anything, it's just my.
Does anybody have any objections to 1.5 million? Because trust me, we fought over that for a long time, too, last year, so.
It was like two meetings just on that.
Yeah. And that's a critical discussion. I mean, I'm happy to give you the rationale, how we got there, but.
We walked that enough times to.
And again, it's preliminary, procedural, that will most likely change.
I have a question, living away from the more contentious stuff here, about the activity fees, and it was budgeted for.
Can we take that up under new business?
New business, sure.
Okay. Having said that, on a new business, Mr. Kurtz.
Regarding activity fees, I know we budgeted $154,000 last year, I guess it was again the last budget, and do you have an update on how much we've collected to date?
I think I shared that with the committee.
I think it was 60-something thousand dollars, wasn't it?
That was before the winter.
That was before the winter sports.
What did you say, I'm sorry, 60?
It was 60-something, I'm going to try to find it.
I'm guessing it's 90-something, I thought.
The winter collection just ended, the winter collection just ended today.
Okay, so all that.
So, we'll have an update for you shortly.
That was, Daniel, last number I had was $64,000.
That was just the fall.
I think it's around 90, but I'd have to verify that.
Which hopefully has us, you know, getting close. Now, remember, I think, I think when we talked about all that, and I'll, let me see if I have my, just give me one second here. Because part of the overall calculation was we were raising gate receipts, we were charging more for physicals, and.
That was all being run in.
And we were, so we were throwing around a number, it included.
Oh, that was in the 150.
Yeah, so let me just see what I've got here.
Well, the physical fees and the activity fees are all in the same account, the ticket sales are in a different account.
Because I looked here.
The 154 is the activity fee and the physical fees.
I'm looking at the budget here on the website, under function 6700, revenues from district activities, it's budgeted as $2,000, $215,000.
That's your admissions, which is your ticket sales, your activities, your physical fees.
All right, so the 154,000.
Is a part of that.
Is exclusively for the activity fees. That doesn't include the gate.
No, activity and physical fees.
And physical, excuse me, all right. Or when that was budgeted, we expected to receive 454,000, right?
It was a good estimate at the time, I mean, we, based on the rosters we had at the time.
Yeah, what we did was, we took, we took the rosters of, of the band, the athletics, everything else, and we just said, okay, we got to start somewhere. So, how many kids are participating in, in activities overall, how many kids are participating in one sport, two sports, three sports, four sports, how many kids are in band, and we rolled the performa together. The only thing I think I did, wasn't able to determine was, how many people were part of the same family, so where did the cap kick in? Okay? And then we had free and reduced lunch, which said those kids would not pay any fee, all right? So, and I didn't know what those numbers were. So, at the end of the day, we were working off of the assumptions that everybody, there was nobody on free and reduced lunch, and there were no family caps being implemented when we rolled up those numbers. And then we increased our ticket sales by a dollar for students and adults, and we increased, I think, 10 bucks, the physical fee, it went from 15 to 25, or something like that. At the end of the day, you rolled all the numbers together, and you got $150, some odd thousand dollars.
All right, so you expect to get near 154,000.
Well, you know.
As an estimate, but that was, okay, that was really my question. Maybe, I think we should raise ticket prices for the sporting events a bit more. I don't know if this is the time to talk about that, or I don't know when that time is.
I'm not sure, we.
We're not in the budget season, I mean, we haven't really, I mean, we could talk about in finance.
It won't be next year, it won't be this calendar, it'll be next.
Is there anything that prohibits us from doing it for this calendar year?
Well, we've already done it once, and it hasn't been implemented. We've already raised the fees for basketballs, if we go to do it again, you're double dipping on top of that.
They raised it by a dollar, right?
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, these are people who are dedicated to do the games, I don't think a dollar's going to stop them, or $2.
We've already raised it to the dollar, so you raise, well, kind of get into the budget and start talking about that.
I'm talking about the football games, when you have a bunch of people coming, I think, well, we can do a little bit more than a dollar. I don't know, like, the other in the county, how, how their, what their fees are, that might be something maybe Dr. Rado would figure out.
Revenement enhancement committee could probably look into that one, bring recommendations back.
Finance, I mean, any one of those committees can talk about that.
Well, again, revenement enhancement could look at it as far as what's the average, you know, throughout the county and see where it is.
I mean, to give you some.
Ms. Ross can come up with that information for us very quickly.
And so, here's, here's what I came up with last year, and as of, what was the date of this thing? Well, it's been, it's been clouded up now, so, I think we, we figured we were generating about $8,000 a year from the physicals. And that was pre-raising the limit. Okay, so we use the numbers that X number of kids were getting their physicals done here, and so we increased it from 15 to 25. All right?
That's pretty substantial.
Gate receipts, on average, we generated around, if we raised the, the gate receipts, the numbers that we had now, we assumed that we would raise about $56,000 from gate receipts. And athletic, band fees, overall, we thought we'd raise about 140. And then when you add in the extracurricular fees, which are the clubs and things of that, it was like another 28. So, that was kind of the break, those were the assumptions that we had used, whether we, those assumptions are correct now, because, you know, band enrollment was down, because we did some other things, that stopped becoming a graded activity.
I think it might be a lot of issues, too.
So, you've got lots of different things, lots of different moving pieces, people, you know, tougher times, maybe people decide they're not going to enroll, you know, have their kids play in as many things as, as they had been previously, so the numbers were maybe a little bit lower. I don't, I don't know, we don't know the numbers until we get to the end of the year. And then we'll take consideration of those numbers.
Yeah, I just had a question.
Yeah.
That was just my question.
Well, I just wanted to make sure you had all the information.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm happy to share this stuff with you guys as we go forward. Any other questions or comments on Mr. Kurtz's, under new business, any other new business?
I have a hundred things.
Yep.
I know at the committee of the whole meeting, we discussed these temporary committee appointments to a few committees that will not meet until, that will meet before you assign, new committee assignments at the January meeting. Do we need a formal vote on that, just to approve them, or can we just?
I appointed them.
Okay, so we don't, the board doesn't need to approve those temporary appointments?
Yeah, they're just temporary for one meeting at the most effective, I think there's only one meeting, and that's the curriculum. Everything else was, was canceled for the December, and we're going to meet, the, Dr. Rado, I sent you a note, please advertise it, it's not on the thing to be advertised. We'll meet that first Thursday in, in.
That will be taken care of.
January, and then we meet the following Monday as a committee of the whole meeting, which will also ask you to advertise as a voting meeting.
Right.
So, we can vote the committee appointments at that point there.
So, while we're talking about committees, there's two things I wanted to bring up. One was, we sort of talked about having a policy review committee, but we didn't really take any formal action at the last meeting. So, I'm going to put a motion on the table to form an ad hoc policy review committee for the 2012 year, and if there's a second for that.
A second?
Great, and then we can vote on that, and then we'll have that as a committee as well for consideration come January. Any comments from board members on that issue? We have a first and a second.
I would just like to have it modified with an end date, such as when the policies have been reviewed and established.
I think you just said for the one year.
I said for 2012.
2012, 2013 school year.
So, it would end by December 31st of next year.
Oh, 2012.
Yeah, that's right. But, I mean, we can have it end by June 30th, I don't, it doesn't make a difference.
Again, all I would say is, is, you know, we have these committees going forever without an end date, and I just say if we, you know, after the review of the policies have been completed and adopted.
That could be a long time.
I just, that could be a long time, so I was thinking 12 months, 12 meetings, if they can't get it accomplished in that period of time, then, you know, maybe we need to revisit what we're doing. That's what I was thinking, so there's no objection.
You can always re-up it. Ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
You can always extend it, too, if you need to.
Okay, no comments from board members? Any comments from the public on the policy review committee? All right, seeing, can we get a roll call vote on that, please?
Okay, so this is for an ad hoc policy review committee for the calendar year 2012.
Correct.
All right.
I have a.
First and second.
First, second.
You okay with that timing?
You can, you can first, your own.
I put out a motion.
He made a motion.
He presented.
Remember the dictatorship.
You could have said no.
North Korea's.
It's your first and second.
Yeah.
Okay, first by Mr. Basil, second by Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, having said that, I did put together everybody's recommendations. I printed them out and I left them on my desk. So I will be emailing them to everyone tonight, all the board members, all nine board members, in terms of, these are committee selections. I had asked the board members to get to me their committee selections as soon as possible, so I could get them back to them for their consideration. I've done that. I put them all together, and I'll send them out to everybody tonight when I get home, okay? So you guys should have them, and you can take a look at them. I can say that everybody got their first choice, and just about everybody got their second, actually, everybody got their second or third choices, either or. But curriculum instruction, I think everybody wanted to be on that committee. And so obviously, I couldn't accommodate that.
It's a fun time, and you're popular, Richard.
Well, I can tell you, I mean, eight out of.
Stop at 9 o'clock. I mean, it's a hell of a.
Yeah, eight out of nine board members had that as their second choice, or really their third choice, and I, so I had to make some tough decisions there, but otherwise, everybody else got their choices. So I'll get those out, and then if January 5th is advertised as a voting meeting.
No, January 5th is a curriculum instruction meeting.
Sorry, January 9th is the voting meeting as well.
We can vote out there, too, if we want.
Then, you know, we can vote, if everyone's prepared to vote on that, those recommendations, we can discuss them and vote on them at that time, and those committees can then be in place and ready to rock and roll for the next 12 months.
Hopefully it won't be as controversial as last year.
We'll see. We'll see. Okay. Let's see. Was there anything else in new business?
I think this is new business. I wanted to find out, under the conference requests, I'm looking at this one page, is that a budgeted item that the teachers have, like a lump sum that they're able to spend down for their conferences? And if so, once you hit that budget amount, do you then tell them no, that they can't go to the conference?
She's saying, all these conferences here, the people going to, you know, so he was going to Chicago, he was, you know, somebody with the BCIU, somebody's going to Paspa, Hershey, Hershey, Hershey.
Yeah, there's a budget for those. If they would exceed those, we wouldn't.
I mean, as a group, as they go, you have a budget line item that shows it's going from 1,000 to 500, to, and then once they hit.
There's no individual staff member, staff development budget. There's a pot of money.
Right.
Decisions are made based on the value of what's being brought back, and in some cases, you'll see them going, and the costs are being picked up by the individual, where they'll make a compromise with the district for different things. But for example, like when Mrs. Berkeley or Danielle go, those are required conferences that we have to go to. I go to federal programs, and I go to different conferences. And so those are required by the state for us to attend, but for the very most part, there are no conferences for staff. That was a budget item that was cut out of the budget. There's probably a total of about $1,000 sitting district-wide for any kind of conferences anymore.
We took that out last year. So for example, the trip to Chicago was not paid for by the district?
Correct, it was not paid for by the district. Their personal base, the staff are using.
They're paying for it. Okay, 'cause I'm just curious about these trips that were coming up in March, and there wasn't any cost on the side. I just wondered if, once the pot of money is all gone, can they forego that year? If it's a state requirement, do you categorize those that go to the state required, make sure they go? But once that money is spent down for that year, then there's no more money.
Well, if it's state required, then it'll tap into another budget.
They have to tap it. Well, that's what I was wondering.
I budget every year, for example, for Julie Berkeley and myself, now, we didn't go last year, it was in Pittsburgh, so neither one of us attended it, but I budget, in my budget, for us to attend conferences, for us to have Paspa workshops that we, we don't go off-site anymore. We actually do a webcast, because this is what keeps us up to date on the business end of school finance. That's how I get the budget information from the governor. That's how I get all that stuff.
You might see someone going to the BCIU, and the only reason they're showing up here is because we're authorizing them to go to the training. It could be a free training, but we'll have to bring a substitute in, or we're gonna pay their mileage, because they're gonna drive themselves. So for any of those reasons, you would see it listed here. So there may not even be a cost.
Okay, 'cause for some staff, I thought they paid for some of their continuing education courses.
That's a different.
That's different.
That's a different.
That's not, yeah, that's not this. Oh, yeah, that's under the budget.
That's a contractual.
That's a contractual issue that will show up here.
You can't do it. So if they, so there's not a pot of money that you keep spending out of for that, and then once you.
It's called the general fund.
It's called the general.
Oh. That's not.
Just, you won't see much of that, because the teachers, that was a concession they gave us last year, is that they removed that from being used, but next year, it's back in there. And if we put $350,000 in there as a budget, and they spend 400, guess what? It's coming out somewhere else.
Well, that's what I wanted.
Contractually, we are obligated to reimburse them up to $3,500.
$3,500.
For their continuing education.
It would come out of the fund balance.
Yeah, we have no choice.
Per teacher.
Per teacher.
So if everybody goes, then it's X number, you know, total number of teachers times 3,500, that's the cap.
And we cannot tell them that we've spent all the money for this year. You may not.
It's in the contract, so.
That's all I wanted to know. I see people doing things. I thought, well, I wonder where all this.
That's not the same.
Okay, well, this could be different, but then the teachers jumped in my head too, so.
Right. I mean, I think procedurally, the only thing I can think of, there was a couple of things on there that had already happened that we're now voting on tonight.
Well, those, actually, you don't vote, these are just informational items.
Information, okay, so that's, just wanna make sure that, from a timeline perspective, we weren't voting on something after the fact.
No.
No, I just had this here, and I saw.
You'll see that every month as well. We'll detail what's happening every month as informational items.
The only other issue I had on, and I forgot to bring it up under committee, under new business, was when we, and this was Mr. Kurtz's suggestion, when we finally agree on the committees, have a page on the website where we've got the different committees listed with the members of each committee, and you can have their email addresses there too, so the public is aware of.
He's sitting right out there right now.
Yeah, I see him taking notes. I'm just putting it out there, so that, you know, when we do get this taken care of in January, that that list, that page is on the website as well for the benefit of the public.
I'd also like to make a recommendation that we, and somewhere on the superintendent's corner, maybe against Dr. Otto Zane, put his email address, because unless you actually go into the staff directory, the district directory, you can't find his email address.
That's probably by design.
Wait a minute, just for the record, for anybody that needs to find it, Daniel Boone, I did this when I first got here, I said, let's get rid of dboone.k12.pA.us. We're dboone.org, and all you need is a last name.
No, you don't.
Not all of them.
Monica is not, Mrs. Hamel is not Hamel, it's M. Hamel.
Okay.
And Mr. McLaughlin's like.
McLaughlin's hyphenated.
Hyphenated.
Mr. Potts is not Potts.
Okay, unless there's someone with the same name.
Right.
But it is very simple.
Again, all I would recommend is next to the superintendent's corner, put your email address below, so if they click on it, automatically goes into email as a header.
You can put it right out on the front page. I've got no problem with that whatsoever.
Again, it was just, take one heartache away from one parent.
Okay, anything else under new business? All right. Okay, moving on, presentations by the public on issues. So anybody has anything they want to tell the board? You can speak about anything you like. You're limited to three minutes.
Unfortunately, with the holidays, you run strong competition with the Union Township meetings as well. Last month, they won out, this month you won out. So apparently, that's what confused me when I was getting, wasn't getting up and everything. Is this going to be the way it's going to be now? I mean, this is just, like, within a month, at the end of each segment, there's a public comment that just, because it used to be just like that in the committee meeting, right?
So in the Committee of the Whole meetings, we have an opportunity for public participation as we go through the different sections. And then during a voting meeting, before we vote on something, the public has the right to opine on what we're voting on before we actually cast the vote.
Did you change that? Because that's not the way it's in the agenda, nor have we done it in the past.
I mean, before, you were only allowed to public comment at the beginning, and at the end.
Yeah, you changed that this meeting.
It was only the committee.
I've been doing that for the last 12 months.
Committee of the Whole.
No.
Committee of the Whole.
Committee of the Whole, yeah.
That was a mind blank on my part, and somebody here, nobody here caught me on that one, so.
It's not bad.
We'd like to be rogue.
Yeah, we'd like to be rogue this meeting. It's your Christmas present.
Thank you. All right, now for some other executive decisions. Now, that's up to the board to decide, I guess. I mean, that wasn't intentional. I was still in my Committee of the Whole sort of mindset, so that was my fault. I apologize.
We'll have to discuss that.
Because I approve it a lot better.
I mean, I think maybe with a smaller audience.
A lot of.
Yeah, but you want to have a.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to be consistent, and so whatever we're doing, I mean, I would tell you that we're probably not gonna have that going forward. That was my mistake tonight. I think if we're voting on issues, that's why we have a period for the public comment at the beginning of the meeting, so that you can stand up and say, well, look, I want to talk about X, Y, and Z, and we may not talk about it for another hour, but you've had your chance to speak about it in the beginning of the meeting, I think.
And these items are brought up at the Committee of the Whole. Of course, you may not attend the Committee of the Whole, but they're the same things that are discussed at the Committee of the Whole.
I think the problem is, by inducing that public conversation with each individual, we won't get through a voting meeting very quickly, and so, you know, we could be here for a very long time.
Two and a half hours of this voting meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody from the public got up at every single juncture to have a comment about everything that we're voting on, then we could be here for a very, very long time. So going forward, I don't think we will be doing that. It'll be public comment at the beginning, public comment at the end. Okay?
Takes longer than the three minutes.
We'll start the clock when you start speaking.
Very true.
Ken Jones, I live at 219 Chestnut Street in Union Township, and.
Yes, you sent me an email. To board.
I'm sorry?
You sent me an email.
Yes, yes, I did. Given the state of our economy, and how it's affected our township, our county, and of course, the district, I've been searching for altered extremes of revenue. Something that would sustain us for quite a period of time, and would be substantial. And what I found was a company, and this has to do, the project has to do with naming rights. And it, I found a company in Lancaster called Market Street Sports Group. And I talked to the president of sales, and I talked to him last week, and he asked me if I wanted the handout that he gives to boards. And they already have under contract about 10 or 15 high schools, and some of them, I want to read to you this, you may recognize some of these, I'll read them to you. It's Hempfield High School in Lancaster, Wilson High School, right from Burke County, Potts Grove High School in Lower Potts Grove, Conestoga in Irwin, and they just hooked up with Governor Mifflin. And they want, they want to get their, Conrad Weiser wants to get with them also, so there's quite a few that they've gotten on board, and they have 30 years of experience doing this. Hooking up with high schools, with corporate partners in naming rights. And Hempfield, in this literature that I want to give you, Hempfield High School has made in one year alone, $300,000 alone. So there's quite a bit of money to be made out of this. And there's, I just want to read one comment to you from the superintendent in Leonardville, in Landisville. She said, when she arrived in Landisville, the beginning of the 2008, 2009 school year, shortly after the school board approved the deal, initially, when I saw they voted on this, I thought, oh, dear God, what is this going to be? But after having helped guide implementation of the plan, all sorts of growing pains, she's now convinced this has worked out far better than what I could have thought at any time. We have really developed partnerships with these companies or entities, and they have become sponsors of us. We have found that these partners are doing a lot of great things for our kids, a lot more simple, a lot more than simply the financial, including creating scholarships and student awards, and helping with great, with general fundraising. So we have, like, what, six schools, and you might think, well, gee, some of these are elementary schools, but when you go on the internet, and I'll give you part of this, they even have, there's like dozens of high schools, and there's even elementary schools that are out there doing this. So there's all kinds of money to be made with this. So if I can just say in closing, according to night, you said, everything needs to be on the table to solve the deficit problem.
Well, I want to thank you for bringing that to our attention. We've been discussing this issue in the Revenue Enhancement Committee for a couple of years now, and we've talked about, we actually had to get a policy in place first, which was a advertising and naming rights policy, which we got, I think it was two years ago, we got that in place, or a year and a half ago, we got that in place. And then we could start doing the, we were looking at advertising dollars, and we're looking for sponsorship, and so.
These guys are.
Well, I appreciate you handing that information to us, because obviously, we need to touch base with these guys and figure out what kind of program they have and how they implement. I think from our side, it's an HR issue. We've got a very thin administrative staff, and so we were having a difficult time finding someone to take this issue up and run with it. If these guys have solutions to that problem, we'd love to hear from them.
And these guys are willing to talk to you. Boyertown just did, I think it was in Sunday's paper, they did just this, but they excluded Bear Stadium and one other thing from it, but they're doing.
I know, I know what you just did with the football stadium. I wouldn't take nothing off the table. I mean, I'd find, if it was me, I'd find another way to honor Coach Rosensky if it was me. I mean, there was just so much money to be made, you know, I, you know, I mean, not to your call totally, but.
You can still leave it as his field and name the stadium after.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, there's just so much money to be made out there. And when I read, and I'll give this stuff to you, but there's, I mean, when they said that they made 300,000, it's right in here, they made $300,000 just in one year.
Oh, yeah. I'm not surprised.
And so everybody's kind of doing it now, and now it's in Burke County, and it's happening, so I couldn't, and when I listened to you tonight, talking, I thought, this is a perfect time for me to be here.
Yeah, no, thank you for coming. Thank you for providing, if you could give us that information, actually, it'll go up in Revenue Enhancement Committee, and that's where it'll be discussed and vetted and pursued, and then they'll come to the board with some recommendations.
And I'll write this person's name on here, the president of sales. I don't think it's in here.
Okay.
All right, that'd be helpful.
Oh, thank you very much. We appreciate your help.
Thanks for the time. I need to give this thing a special.
You can just bring it right up here to me.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it, absolutely.
And while I'm up, any other comments from the public?
Would you do a turn?
Second.
Person's adjourned, all right, we're closed. Thanks.
Hit this. No, it sounds like the meeting is closed until you do that.